All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Village of Airmont Board of Trustees, August 4th, 2025, meeting at 5:00 PM. I call the name to order, and would everyone please rise with pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Donna, if you want to do a roll poll or mark everybody present.
Trustee two.
Present.
Trustee vice.
Present.
Trustee Friedman.
Present.
Dr. P. M. Anderson.
Present.
Present. Okay. At this point, I'll open up to public comment, limited to three minutes per speaker. I think the gentleman was here first, and you're not going to have a long wait.
I've been in enough meetings.
If you state your name and address.
Isaac Cloughler, 27 Regina Road. So I want to address the speeding issue on Regina Road. I know it was brought up at last meeting. I wasn't here to comment, but this is an issue which it's a big issue for us on Regina Road. It's I know I watched the last meeting, the back and forth between the trustees and the gentleman that was here. It's not an issue of people going from two or three miles above the speed limit. It's like you could see at least once or twice a day, cars doing like sixty. And it's a through road, right, that brings you from Tallow River to the other side of town. And it's a big issue for families that have kids. And it's quite dangerous. Now, if you drive down Regina Road, you don't even have to speed by just not hitting the brakes. If you have like a big Jeep or a heavy car, just the car rolling down, you hit forty, forty-five easy when the speed limit is thirty. Now, at last meeting, I know there was some concern from the board regarding someone who came up here and spoke about opposition. Now, I checked independently with someone that spoke to that person. He just had an issue with the way it was presented that every few hundred feet, there should be another stop sign. He didn't have an issue with the speeding itself. He agrees that the speeding is an issue on the road, but he didn't like the way the solution was presented. And he had other reservations, but I myself spoke to at least ten neighbors on the block, which are ready to sign whatever is needed, that something has to be done. Now, I live right at the intersection from Regina Road and Park. And I would suggest we do, from all the roads, for any solution, if we apply the solution of stop signs, I do see that that intersection would be the most appropriate. Now, granted, I wouldn't want a speed sign right in front of my house, but I do believe that safety comes first. So I would say that at the intersection with Regina Road and Park Avenue, I want to put in a request that we put up a stop sign. Any questions?
I will dress itself after.
And I know I had back and forth emails with the clerk or deputy clerk, and I was told that there's.
Right. The board responds at the end of everybody, not to each one, but at the end.
Okay. So I just want to add that. I know that the village is doing something about, but I don't know how long the traffic study is going to take. I don't know how long it's going to take to put up sensors. One thing I can tell you, on Regina Road, you don't need any sensors. Just come down there, stand for five minutes, you'll see a car speeding at sixty. Now, before I moved in, there was a neighbor that since left, and she used to tip the cops. That's what she told me, to stand over there. Now, I don't even know if it's legal. So I don't want to be tipping cops, but something has got to be done about that. I don't know if we can wait until like a whole comprehensive study is done for the entire village. All I'm requesting is one single stop sign, Regina Corner Park, and I think that will solve a bit of this speeding on Regina Road. It will definitely slow down the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Berman, 17 South Amundsen, A-M-U-N-D-S-E-N Lane, Airmont, U.S. I have three issues to raise. One, for the village attorney, I don't expect an answer right now. You recently passed a local law regarding sidewalks and.
You didn't pass.
I'm not it. You didn't let me finish. My question is, what happens if a property owner permanently damages a sidewalk? I have two houses on my block that were knocked down from the foundation. You had dumpsters with trucks going back and forth, cement trucks. They damaged the sidewalks. The neighborhood is a walking neighborhood. So my issue will be if the village determines that a property owner permanently damaged a sidewalk, will the village ask the, you know, the property owner to repair it at his or her own cost? Like if Viola or ONR damages the village road, they have to pave it, et cetera. So that's a question for the future. What will the village do with respect to if they notice that a property owner permanently damages a sidewalk? Number two, my neighbor Ed Ruthburg has appeared before you several times with respect to the installation of traffic control devices on Amundsen, and I'm just reinforcing the need for that. Cars are zooming back and forth, and it's a danger. The neighborhood is changing, so a lot more young families in. So I'm concerned about, it's a walking neighborhood, so I'm concerned about that. And last, but not least, something you may not hear a lot, I'm complimenting the village clerk's office. On Friday, a deer was hit by a vehicle. It crawled to the edge of the sidewalk, was being attacked by crows. It's a danger. Like I said, there's a lot of neighbors walking. I called the village clerk's office, and within two, three hours, I assume the town highway department removed the thing. So I want to compliment the village clerk's office. As a 41-year municipal attorney for the town of Ramapo, very rarely do you ever get compliments to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. At this point, we'll close public comment, and I'll open it up to the board who would like to respond, if anyone would like to.
I'll just respond to this. The speeding in the village is a village-wide problem, probably a county-wide problem, probably a statewide problem, but we only dealing with what we're doing here. We had a meeting less than two weeks ago with me and Larry with Ramapo PD, and we came up with a few different solutions, what we're going to do to curb it. Stop signs, for whatever reason, is really shunned upon for traffic control or speed control. For speed control, it's used for traffic control, not for speed control. They have their reservations. Why? Well, we can, of course, discuss it if that intersection is something that's going to do something about it. But we are, I believe, tonight, we're talking about a few speed devices we're going to put up. We talked about much more enforcement around the village, which they promised us they're going to do, and we'll follow up. They told us to give them a week or two to see when they'll be around, and as well as putting up secret speed devices, which will record where the biggest problems are and hopefully address them as we see them. So we are doing things. We know it's a problem. We all have kids here, and we all want to be safe. And it's not only a Regina problem. If it was only a Regina problem, then we just put our resources on Regina. Unfortunately, it's a village-wide problem. Here in Amundsen, Blossom, Echo Ridge, every last street.
You forgot Madison Hill Road.
Oh, Madison Hill Road. Excuse me. So it's everywhere. We can't just put up speed bumps all over the place. We can't just put up stop signs all over the place. But it's something we are actively working on. We're actively working on it. We will do things to make things better, and hopefully I won't stop until we reach some kind of solution. We can't stop people speeding. I can't be in their car. Just know what's happening.
Right. I mean, they actually even made it an option to lower the speed limit in the village to 25 miles an hour. It's not lowering the speed limit.
And it's going to stop people.
We had this debate. It's not going to stop people from speeding. They're just going to speed that much more over the current speed limit. So it's one that we're looking into different aspects of what we can do to try to help the situation. I don't know whether we'll ever eliminate the situation.
Okay. Can I have something?
Joe?
I did attend that meeting. It was July 23rd with trustee Friedman and two officials from the police department. And as trustee Friedman said, we just covered several points. One, they pledged to get a town radar trailer out within a week or two, as you said. I'm not sure if there was one or two. During the meeting, we had a list of roads that were gleaned from these meetings. Did Mr. Berman leave?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. We noted Amundsen. We noted Regina. There were about eight roads, I believe. And I believe those two were at the top three. So we prioritize those roads. You should see a town radar trailer out there, or also the portable speed signs, which are put up on either telephone poles or signs that are in the ground already. We wanted action to be taken quickly, so we are going to follow up and monitor that. You know, we're here to listen and take action. So that's our plan at this point. They also said they would increase presence. We're going to follow up on that. We want to make sure there is a presence around, at least on the top three or four of the streets that are occurring, you know, that are brought up here during these meetings. And we see it ourselves when we're out on the streets as well. And enforcement and again, later in the meeting, we're going to talk about purchasing three or four new devices for the village as well to complement the town resources.
Right. Thank you. Did anybody else want to comment? I think that sums it up. It's a concern that we are working on. At this point, I'm going to try to go down to a discussion part, since we invited John here, rather than have John wait till the end of the meeting to discuss. John's here to discuss with us. We have a road paving budget, and we have a wall discussion to be had, not that cragging here. So in the packet, if you go to the end, you'll see John, John has put together, and I believe everybody has been sent out, list of two, four, six, eight, and this row, about 14 roads on it. It's totaling about approximately $3,727,000 to try to repair those 10 roads. If you read through the packet all the way through, you'll notice that it's about $8 million, I think, to solve pretty much all the roads in the village, 8,604,000. So the road issue, as much as we did budget, we bonded and we've done different things, it's not an issue that's going to go away and one that will probably have to be addressed when we discuss the budget coming up for next year's budget, as far as what needs to be done.
We couldn't have covered all the roads.
What?
It's not even going to cover all the roads.
No, it's not covering all the roads. This is what I said when I mentioned about us bonding to do all the roads at one point to see where or what it might do. But I'm just trying to summarize up.
So what's class one, class two?
Class one is your.
Biggest problem?
Yes.
Okay.
Class two is the next.
Mill and fill.
Yep.
Is 2.4?
Yes. So for the class one roads, which are the biggest problem, to do a two-inch, what they call mill and fill, which is you take off two inches and you pave two, that would be, just the paving would be 2.4 million. To additional, to replace the asphalt curbing on those roads, or your six-inch curb curbs, that's about a million. And then catch basin repairs, I think this line item has been settled. Last year, we had some issues with catch basin repair costs. I think that has been settled with the recent highway contract.
Well, if it's a repair, if it's settled, if it's a rebuild.
Yes. Yeah, no, but this was assuming what we had to do last year. So that line would be reduced, I think, pretty much quite significantly. So all told, you're at 3.7 million for those roads in its entirety, in its entirety.
How much do we have?
So we have in all, we have $1,318,000 and $184.000. We have $179,000 in CHIPS money.
One second. You have 1.3 million. Is that included, that extra money from the sidewalks or not?
Not sidewalks, the bond money for the road.
Yeah, but we had extra money from the sidewalks. So we didn't finish yet the sidewalk all the way to the 59.
Correct. There is money in this, there is money left over in the sidewalk project, and there's also money that was left over from the paving from last year.
Yeah. So the money from the sidewalks, where is that money now?
It's in your sidewalk.
It's in the sidewalk, not in this.
Correct.
Is that ever going to get finished, the 59?
Was the decision made whether we were widening that?
No, we said for two cars, we're not widening it.
Okay. Then we can, then we can finish that up.
I'll, I can show you exactly the way we want to, we discussed the bag then.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're asking, talking about widening the road.
Okay.
Okay. What's with Smith Hill?
Okay. So let's just go back to the money. So the question, so the question that I was saying before is you have 179,000 approximately CHIPS money, 713,000 from bond money that was not spent from the bond that we took, and then we have 426,000 that we budgeted for. So that's where I came up with, that's where I came up with the $1,318,184 number from. So.
Can I ask a question? The Smith Hill road you're talking about, are we talking the full length of Smith Hill?
No, it's impossible.
No. That was from, Smith Hill was from, one second, Smith Court to Cherry Lane.
Smith Court to Cherry.
Backwards.
Okay. And what about?
Both sides, right?
What about from North Lawn to Shore?
Both? Both lanes?
Both lanes. Yeah, full width. North, that's ONR's covering.
And that's also going to be a part of the.
That's not part of the price.
But can we do it as a one package?
No, no, that's ONR.
I know.
It's not packaged with us because it's ONR doing.
I know. ONR is going to do it this season?
They said they're going to do it this season. If you want to make it part of the package, then they will give us the money to do it. But I would suggest letting them handle that.
How much do we have left? How much is paved?
Campbell Avenue.
700.
Of the bond money, 713?
Yeah.
I think somebody gave me that number, so I hope that number.
I did. I put in something more than that.
In the sidewalks. So what I did was, in speaking with the mayor, and knowing now kind of where your budget was, I went through, and I think we don't need to do all of the road in its entirety. So we're going to say Campbell Avenue, we were looking at doing it in its entirety from engineering perspective. That's great to do. We get the road done, and it's walk away. But based on the monetary constraints, we would still like to hit a majority of these roads with some improvements. There are sections that are very poor, and there are sections that are, you know, they could probably last a little longer. So I did go through. And so, for instance, like Campbell Avenue, we wouldn't do it in its entirety. There's about three to four, 500-foot sections that we would do. And that would lower your budget from the proposed, like 700,000. You could get it down to like 400,000. So.
I think doing it in patches.
I'm just giving you your options.
Yeah, I hear.
And we would go through every one of those roads and kind of, and kind of do that. The five that I think should be concentrated on would be Christmas Hill Road from Cherry Lane here to Echo Ridge. That's a very, that's a very poor, poor section.
But there is a water issue. I think that's why.
Yes, at the bottom.
So that needs to be fixed in order to repave.
You just need, yeah, it just needs to be swaled off. So what it does is it runs right down the edge of road.
My other question is, isn't there sidewalks coming there at some point? So there's going to be construction.
Not in the plan.
No.
We'll see with the grant how much it's, we can do.
The grant isn't going to cover until, until Cherry Lane.
Until Cherry.
Smith to Cherry. Can I ask, can we rate, somehow rate these roads of, no, 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 of. That's what he's telling you. One second. How much traffic?
Worst of the worst in traffic.
Traffic. How much traffic is this? For example, Provost Road, I'm assuming has the 15 cars a day, and Smith Hill has 4,000 cars a day. So it's like.
So yeah, your Campbell Avenue, Smith Hill Road, Madison Hill Road are probably your bigger volume roads.
Right.
And then you'll work down from there. You'll go to, you'll go down to Laura, you'll go down to probably Mango, Ronde, et cetera, as you little down. And then obviously the cul-de-sacs are whoever's living on the cul-de-sac. So Vermeer Court, Donald Court, those are very, very low.
It also costs.
You want to say something?
What?
You want to say something?
I just want to let everybody know that there's three major projects going into Campbell Road, so there's going to be multiple road openings and a lot of truck dropping.
So that's, so that's all.
Oh, that's a great point.
Two schools and a house of worship. So if you pave it now, you're going to be repaving it next year.
Right. How about, how about we take that list? How about he's right? How about we find out what construction is going on on all these roads and see, maybe not those those.
People can apply tomorrow.
Yeah, no.
But we know now.
But Campbell is like, it's a W L line, which people are going to build, which is something, so this is off. So 763,000, which is off. And we'll revisit it next year again. So let's go Smith Hill Roads. Smith Hill is between Smith Court to.
So is it, so if I could just ask one, so is it, is it the thought of the board that you want to do roads in pieces? Or is it, we want to, if we're going to do a road, we're going to do it in its totality?
The proper ways to do it, to do it all the way.
I don't disagree with you, but.
I think.
I agree with you.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense. Madison Hill was last year on the list, and we said it's going to be this year. And that's a big part of the project, and I think this should be moved up to one of the first.
Okay. So we're going to do, because then I'll just abandon all the pieces.
I think so.
Okay.
Is that the feeling of the board? Because I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
I don't agree with throwing Campbell Avenue out. I live there. I ride a bike on it. I'd like to know when these projects are going to open up. If it's not three years, we could have a complete failure of that road. And that's a problem for all of us sitting up here.
Well, I get the most calls for the ends of Campbell by South Amundsen.
You have to look at the busiest roads, the main thoroughfares in the village. You can't, you can't go into neighborhoods because I don't want to, I don't want to say why, but you just can't go into neighborhoods.
It's not per neighbor.
You have to look at the greater good of the village.
But Smith.
Especially if the road will be killed. That's what, that's what he's worried about.
Is what going to be killed?
If there's three projects happening, we're going to redo that road, and then the trailers and trucks keep on going out, and kill it the first year is there, and you're only doing little patches.
It's coming to commercial projects.
Three commercial projects, three.
Well, what if it takes three years, and in year one, we have a failure of a.
They're currently in the making.
Two are already approved. We're waiting for the third.
How long does it take, though? I built the house. I know it doesn't happen, you know. How long does that take?
They've already been through planning and zoning. They're going to supply building permits any day now.
Will they start in '25, '26?
Usually when they apply, they start.
Yeah. They're expecting that money.
And when I, when I say patches, that stretches a road, probably 500 would be the minimum.
So are those projects near Clark Park? Were they near like?
Two or, actually, all three are before Clark Park, between Clark Park and South Airmont.
Okay, on that stretch.
Yep.
And where does the village's responsibility end from that point going west towards like suffering?
Intersection, correct.
Which intersection?
Intersection with Cragmere, correct.
Cragmere and Haskell? Is that, and then, okay, and Cragmere, okay. The road's in terrible shape. So I would rather not throw the whole road out.
But we were discussing the last past meeting or two meetings ago, that we were looking to widen the road.
Cragmere?
We spoke about it.
I'm sorry, Campbell?
Campbell.
I must have missed that point, but.
You brought it up.
Expanding Campbell?
The bike lane, what?
Making it wider.
I must have misunderstood. Campbell, that'd be great. I mean, it's the main thoroughfare.
So you're the one that brought it up?
No, we were talking about Cragmere. When we went to Cragmere, I was talking about Cragmere.
Not Campbell?
No, it's Cragmere. So I think we need to get a consensus of what we're prioritizing.
Let me understand something. Is the, is the stretch of Campbell you're talking about, the same stretch that Lou's talking about?
Yes.
Which is, and the same stretch that's bothering Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, I had it down to south, from South Airmont Road in.
So it's terrible. There's drainage issues too. It's terrible.
So drainage issue is going to be addressed before the road gets fixed?
Yeah, they addressed, they addressed the catch basins. They bring those to grade. They recurbish those catch basins, and then.
And it's going to be.
Then they pay. And then this year, we'll make sure we've added the curbing it, whether there was or wasn't, there'll be an asphalt curb installed.
Then we can have trucks coming in and out from both sides, heavy-duty trucks.
And road opening. Yeah, and your road opening, three of them. You just pave a brand-new road and.
So the last time we spoke was two edges that I remember off my head, that was going to be this year, which is Madison Hill and East Blossom.
I keep getting calls for that.
That's the two, if I remember correctly.
East Blossom is right over near here?
It's over here.
Okay. Again, they're like neighborhood roads, but.
No, I have no, I have no problem going to Campbell Avenue if it's that bad, and it's the worst road in Airmont. And we're getting calls for it every single day.
Sherman, is it the worst?
Sherman, are you aware of some of these roads we're talking about?
Yeah. East Blossom, I think it's supposed to, I think for the last four years, we've talked about.
Yeah, it's been pushing.
I think it's five years already.
Yeah.
It's like, we've talked about East Blossom.
Can I just ask John a question? John and I spoke prior to the meeting for a second. John, which three roads were we talking about?
Eliminating?
Yes.
Stillow, Vermeer, and Donald.
Okay. So if we take those out.
That makes sense to me, the neighborhood or the cul-de-sacs or.
Right. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, yeah, getting down to the 1.3, and this is where we were coming up, where, yeah, and then we can go back to the consensus of what, yeah, either we want to pave the whole road or we don't, and then we try to figure it out, you know.
When we pave the whole road, doesn't it?
So I see, for example, Donald, the curving is more, is actually the same price as doing the repave. So.
But maybe, maybe a street like Donald, we don't have to have that.
Maybe.
Right. And he's saying to take Donald, take Donald, Stillow, and Vermeer off for right now. I mean, again, we're at 3.7, so there's no sense of us looking at, you know.
Can we take out more money?
Well, again, this is what I spoke about last year. This is what I'm going to speak about with the budget. We have to put it into a budget. My thought process is to take a road budget that we budgeted 426,000, take it up to 700, 800,000. Every year, you're going to have 800,000 to throw at roads, plus CHIPS money. So you're talking about a million dollars a year. Yeah, it's not going to, yeah, you're talking with this, that's why I started up the conversation. If you go to the last page, $8 million to fix this. And we don't have $8 million in a budget, and we're not going to have $8 million.
In the next eight years.
Right. Yeah. But we have, but we, but we have to put in a good amount of money for roads, because this is where it just keeps coming down to. Prices have gone up, and our budget for roads is not, and, you know, even though we try to keep us, we want to keep a budget that's meaningful for all residents, but roads are important for us to fix. So I think we're going to have to look at doubling that when we, when we all have that tough conversation about budgets in a couple of months. But, yeah, but trying to figure this out for now is what we, what we need to do with the 1.3. How can we best use the 1.3? That's, that's a consensus that we need from here. And, yeah, I don't know whether the answer is, will Campbell hold up, you know, John, in your estimation, will Campbell hold up a year if we, with all that construction that's going to take place?
No, it, it'll get destroyed.
It'll get destroyed that much more.
Yeah.
Because you'd be patching to hold it over a year.
Well, that's what he's saying, the 400,000, I think.
Well, even, even less, I would do even less.
Okay.
So I would literally just go in and just do like one lane. So if the, if the lane is poor, I would do like a strip of the lane for now, so that you're not riding on, you know.
So I would look at the bare minimum that it should be safe.
Right.
While the construction.
Right, right. That's what I would do on Campbell.
I would, I would do that on Campbell, and then Smith Hill, there's always projects going on Smith Hill, and that's your.
And Smith Hill, we're looking to widen the road. Either way, we're waiting for that.
Correct. And then there were sidewalks also.
And we're doing sidewalks, and we're waiting for the owner to move the poles to widen the road. So I think it's also a waste of money.
Do you? Okay.
Christmas Hill Road.
Thoroughfare is 150,000, so.
Yeah, because Smith Hill has concrete curves, so I believe most.
Well, we do encourage.
Christmas Hill Road.
Echo was last year. No, that wasn't.
No, and Echo was.
Coming towards, yeah. That has, I think that has.
That has to be done.
That's in.
Because if Christmas Hill is on, I think East Blossom should be on too.
One second. I think Christmas Hill.
Christmas Hill from Echo to Cherry, so that's that one.
It's 21,000 for the.
That's the curving.
For the curving. I don't think it's necessary if we pitch, because that's a, or it is more necessary.
Well, you got to look at it. The curving will keep the edges of the road together, so it's going to keep the water. Because right now, the water just shoots down there, goes off the road, and then erodes the side of the road. So the curving will keep that in check, and then we can bring it to a point where we're prepared to take the water in an area, so it stops that side erosion.
Well, the last year, the plow company basically removed that, what was left.
Well, if the plow company removes it, it's the plow's company's responsibility to put it back to Birm at the end of the year. I mean, that's what we have in the contract.
The only way to get out of that is start putting concrete curbs in, but your cost is going to go through. But I think that road needs to be done. Laura Drive needs to be done.
Look.
Um...
Laura's non, non-18.
Correct, but I went through, and again, I wouldn't do all of it. There's, there's a large piece in the middle that is decent. It's like your ends are not good, so... Again, when we go through, if we didn't do the whole road...
Guys, if we're gonna have different conversations, we're not gonna...
Well, he has, he has Laura Lane.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we're gonna, if we're gonna not do the whole road, I, I'm not gonna come in and do, like, a hundred-foot or two-hundred-foot of length. We're gonna do probably five or seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot of length of road, and get to a good point where we can stop, go over a decent or moderate section, and then continue again. So I've taken a look at that, and I think, based on that, Laura could be done for somewhere three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It would be the whole road again. It would be good stretches of road.
Laura also has some Lucas Road going on over there.
Every road has an intersection.
No, but even say, it's, if it's work in progress, we did that mistake last year, and I look at the roads that we did, so we need to push it for a year.
And, and my block, and they did, they did it a year later, and that's really three, two years later, it's three thousand, but that's, every single block is that same way. That's unfortunately, that's Airmont. Everybody, every year, everybody's building.
Unfortunately, yeah, you have the, you have the building, and then you also have the utility companies, and they're, you know, I have their long-term plans, but they move all the time, every year, so...
That's literally work in progress. Either we speak to the contractors on Laura, that they should get it done before...
There, there's no...
There's no way of doing that.
No, I'm saying that it's work in progress, that structure is...
I guarantee you, there's no construction now, next year, somebody's pulling out a permit and knocking to the road again. You know that.
So, wanna go back and try and summarize the most important roads in the first category?
Well, that's what I was trying, that, that's what John and I came through with, yeah, but again, it's not doing every single road, it's doing the important parts of those roads, and the roads that we can do the entire road, where we, that, that's what we came up with a plan when we spoke. So that's, but I mean, again, doesn't, you know...
Is it changing as we're talking, or is it still valid?
It's, it's, well, I mean, Campbell might be, actually, I think it's staying, actually, I think it's staying the same.
It's staying, yeah.
Yeah, staying, staying the same.
How much is the expenditure on Campbell? And didn't, based on whatever they're saying, like, maybe just do parts and...
Correct, so I had Campbell, you know, from South Airmont Road in about a thousand, thousand to twelve-fifty feet, but if there's major projects going on, we're not gonna be using that, then what I would do on, I wouldn't do the thousand feet, I would go in and just address the lane areas that are poor.
So what would that total cost be there? How much would that free up for other roads?
You could probably get that down to, I would say, a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty thousand from the seven-hundred.
Right? Everybody's happy with that? Then you use the money elsewhere?
Right.
Yeah, a hundred-thousand-dollar Campbell.
Right, and we have to fix it, cause that's the worth of it.
And Park on South Airmont Road?
Yes.
Shimon, keep going on the list, if you, keep trying. So Campbell, just one-fifty. Can we just go down the list and kind of agree where we, money would best be spent?
Yeah.
Yeah, let us finish, so then we can mark it, we'll mark it down, go through numbers after.
Smith Hill Road's out.
Smith Hill Road's out, you said.
Smith Hill Road, north, uh, and Echo, which is...
Wait, we're taking Smith Hill Road completely out?
Yeah, for now, this year.
Okay.
And Christmas Hill's out?
Christmas Hill will be severed doing.
Okay.
That's one-ninety-eight. Or ten.
So Christmas Hill, we're doing the entire thing?
Yeah, it's one, it's two-hundred.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, north, north, uh, Laura Lane, what, so what do you say about Laura?
We'll just need stretches.
Laura, I would do in, in two stretches.
Two stretches, and I'll take out completely the...
What would that cost us?
Roughly three-hundred thousand. That would be for two-thousand feet. I had it from, going from sixty-five Laura to Kings, and then from Thomason Drive to...
Okay, that you'll do, very, I'm starting with the numbers, so if you have thousand, okay. Cravill, the lane, Cravill Drive?
Where?
Provost. Provost?
Uh, Provost is on there.
What is it?
Provost is off Campbell, off North Airmont Road. What do you say about Provost?
I think it should be done in its entirety, but it's not, it's not a high...
Okay, so let's...
Is that, is that off Cragmere, Provost?
It goes from North Airmont Road to Cragmere, sir?
Yeah.
East Blossom, I, East Blossom?
East Blossom.
East Blossom's almost...
It has to be done in its entirety. So that's one-twenty-five.
Kinley?
Only a hundred-twenty-five.
And Rondell Lane?
Rondell, it should be done in its entirety.
Should be done?
Yes.
Cheap one. It's a fifty thousand.
Where's Rondell Lane?
It's off the Genus.
Okay.
Adams?
Adams, we do get a lot of calls on, so I would say it's in its entirety.
I would take all...
You, you say, you say it's Adams?
Yes.
Mango, is that bad?
Mango, we could do it pieces, stretches.
It's a dead end, it's one side, no, right?
He's on Mango.
Mango is...
We can reduce it. So right now, it's at one-thirty-seven. We could probably do stretches for eighty thousand.
Eighty?
Yes.
Which one?
Mango. Stillow, we said, skipping this head?
Stillow, we would skip. Uh, Vermeer, we would skip. Madison Hill, um, two-hundred thousand.
How come? What are we not doing?
Madison Hill, we would, I would do from South Airmont Road to, to House Number Ten, and then on the other end, from Hampton Road into House Twenty-Six.
So what I would do, if it makes sense, do full Madison Hill, besides the curving. It's hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
It has curving now?
So Madison was three, oh, you're taking the curving off, so it'd be...
Right, so there's concrete curving up on the top part, um, of houses, then there was, uh, asphalt curving that is now worn away at the majority of houses that was, that was there. So it did have berms in front of everybody's houses, but that's...
It's gone now.
That's gone now, so...
So it's hundred-and-fifty, so either we do parts, and we pull it, or...
What are you saying there? Are you saying that it is worth to do the curb, to keep? Isn't that where we repaired some water on that road, but...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say. We did, we put the water in. I think you're fine, I think you're fine doing it without, but I know it was such a big deal, and it's hard to do the contract.
The answer is, if you do Madison, the numbers that you gave, I just put together, if you do Madison Hill and parts, comes out to one-point-two.
Full Madison Hill?
No, two-hundred thousand parts. No, the one-point-two million.
And we have a hundred thousand more?
No, it's...
One-point-three.
One, one million, three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand.
Yep, you have a hundred thousand more. You do the full Madison, and you get to your number.
I'll do full Madison without the curving, and then I'll do Donald without the curving.
Yeah, again, this is all dependent on...
Can we do Donald without the curving?
Uh, it doesn't make sense for a small cul-de-sac, sixty-seven thousand dollars.
And again, it all depends on the bid, too. Like, I've estimated a little bit over what we've seen this year, by a couple bucks. If you get him a couple dollars less, you could be able to stretch it further.
Or we tell them, this is...
So do Madison and Donald without curbing?
I'm gonna hold you to it.
When they do it, that's the problem. And that comes at, you know, the...
All right, so let's just recap then. So Christmas Hill Road in its entirety, uh, at least it's on my list.
Let, let's start with Campbell Hill?
Campbell Avenue...
It's one-fifty.
One-fifty for the stretches.
Yeah.
Smith Hill was out. Christmas Hill, entirety. Laura?
Three-hundred, is it?
Yep, it stretches. More.
Correct.
Provost was, was out.
Provost, he came up to three-hundred entirely, you said?
Yes.
East Blossom entirety?
Entirety.
Rondell's entirety?
Entirety.
Adams is a entirety, you said?
Yep.
So if you're gonna do Adams, you might as well do Adams the same as Madison, it's right off of.
Yeah.
Don't do the cur, yeah, if you're gonna do Adams, I wouldn't do the curving either.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make sense, if you're not doing it on Madison, you're gonna do the cul-de-sac.
No. And I would take all the curving from the water also, it's also expensive.
Well, Laura, I think, has concrete.
Yeah.
Laura has sidewalks.
No, Laura, it's, parts of...
Yeah.
No, Laura, Laura. So why don't we eliminate completely the curving on Laura?
Make it away more roads, then?
Right, I mean, if we take away the curving, we, we're gonna get more roads, and the, and the curving wears away after about five years of plowing.
Well, I'm just, we put the curving, cause that was the...
Right, right, no, no, but, but as long as we know the answer in advance...
Now, I see the price, which...
Excuse me, but you have all residents calling that there's water going on to their lawn when there's no berm, so, just so you know that.
This is why we add it.
Well, yeah, well, the water is gonna go under their lawn, because it's gonna pitch, it's gonna pitch...
The question is, did, did these, did these properties have this before, and now we're taking it away? That's the question.
Yes, they did.
On my street, there's never been this before, so I, I don't know, which streets, did have it, to which street?
So I'll go, yes, they did.
All streets had it, I think.
Yeah.
So what I, so the session that I had with, with the mayor was, I guess all streets at one point had them, whether they've worn away over time, and they're just nonexistent when we're going back through. Because what we held last year was, if it, if it was there, it was replaced. If it wasn't there, they didn't get it.
And then people, yeah, they probably didn't even know that it used to be there, because it was, was there.
So we're having residents complain, it's...
Right. Cause Laura, Laura's a hill.
No, everything's a hill.
I know, some of them are clatter than others.
Well, Madison Hill is a hill.
I don't know, I'm not sure, I don't know.
No, no, no.
Is it, is it, is this a curb going by, by, by linear foot?
Yes.
How, how, how is it possible? How is it linear foot on Donald Court? When, when the paving is on sixty-four?
Cause it goes all the way, goes all the way around the cul-de-sac.
Both sides.
Always both sides.
But, yeah, no, it goes all the way around the cul-de-sac.
No, it doesn't make sense.
There's, there's ways to do it, that you make it like a pole, and there's ways to just make a slight bump, but they don't last.
Both don't last.
The plow just...
Both don't last. The plow takes it off, whatever was left, last year is off, right?
Right.
So, my question is, we're just wasting our money that we grown half, and we're putting it for curbs.
Right, if the homeowner wants to go and put a berm in front of their house, that's gonna be theirs, you know.
Or we, or we do what we did last year, if, if they had a defined one, it goes back, and if they didn't...
Yeah.
They're, they're probably used to it by now.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You would make the snow plowing company happy, cause he doesn't have to worry about knocking them off if they're not there, right?
Okay, so we could work that into the...
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, no, no.
Would the contractor put a small berm if there's one there, even though we agreed to pave the road without paying for that little berm?
No.
I think that's what you just said, I'm repeating it.
Well, no, so what, what it was last year is, they put, yeah, they call it asphalt curb, asphalt berm, if it was existing.
Or just bent an edge upward, kinda thing?
You're still building it, like, you're building it up. Uh, depends on the contractor, how... Mediable there.
Uh, I remember you brought the issue up last year, like, why didn't they do curving? And I said, is it Haskell they did? I have two dogs, so I'm on the road walking all the time, and I, I don't know if we paid for a curb, but they put a little lip on it for drainage, and it's perfect, like... Whereas you were saying the road near you, they didn't do that.
Yeah, they didn't, there was no curving in last year's contract.
So on this road, is it, oh, no, Brookside goes up to Haskell.
Last year, we did twenty...
They did a beautiful job, but there is a little lip on both sides.
Right.
I don't know if he's...
Probably just enough to feather off, or you've had some sort of semblance of something that...
If it was just on this side, and they just...
Snow plow and everything else.
So they wouldn't charge us for a quote-unquote curb there, that, that was just nice, okay.
The only place I would do with the curving is on Christmas Hill.
You have the contractor's own, though?
I mean, if you're, I mean, if you're taking the curving, if you're taking...
Thirty thousand millimeter?
If you're taking the curving...
The prices.
Yeah, thirty dollars a square foot.
All the bids I've seen throughout the year.
You think milling and paving is the same thirty dollars a square foot? Then thirty dollars a millimeter, put it that way? Sounds like we asked the name, I guess.
You should have...
It looks like it.
The curb? They hate doing the curb.
Yes.
Cause they, you have to sit there, and there's a little machine, they have to watch it, they have to tamp it.
I mean, that saves us a million bucks and lets us pave more. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with saving, saving and trying to pay, I'm, I'm try, I'm rather get ninety percent of the road, ninety, ninety-five percent of the road, right. The curb, you know, I, I'm less than fined about.
Um, but besides Christmas Hill, because Christmas Hill has a water issue, because it has...
There's no houses there.
Right.
But the road gets killed, because...
Let me do it again. It's a bit cheaper. You have no houses. Here, here, you have people getting affected, here, you have more people getting affected.
But this is the cheapest, it's a hundred-one thousand dollars.
Why is that, okay?
I don't know.
Seven, only seven-hundred feet, and somehow Donald Court is twenty-two-hundred feet, and we're doing, uh, double the road? Something's not adding up.
Because it's the court, it's the cul-de-sac.
No, look at the linear feet, how is this possible?
There, the linear...
I, I was born yesterday.
Of the road. Oh, of the curving.
Yeah. Unless he thinks we don't have to...
Well, no, no, the length of curving is equal to the amount of road.
Exactly, and how is it here, not?
No, no, the roads are in square footage.
A square footage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so does anybody, okay, so, so let's do it the other way. Does anybody want the curving on any particular road? Otherwise, we take the curving out.
I don't see why we should pick and choose.
Okay, then why don't we take all the curbing out, so we can put as much road?
Except for Christmas Hill.
Except for Christmas Hill.
That does need it.
Okay, except for Christmas Hill.
And, and we're scrapping the idea, if it had it, they already, we'll put it back?
No, they're responsible for that, so if, if they mill it off, and something...
Then they have to put it back.
They have to put it back.
Yes. And you can know that by property, who's, who knows that?
We take pre-construction photos, and then we're following them as they pave.
Got it. Oh, that's good. Okay, fair, fair. All right, then we're good with that. Then we can push in more roads.
Right, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
So we can do ma, full Madison Hill.
Well, again, I'll caution you, we, until we get to bids, we actually won't know how far we can go, so that's why I think if, if we could just narrow that, these are the roads that we wanna target, so if we're taking Stillow off, Vermeer off, and Donald off, and...
That was a cheap one.
The truth, you like back on Donald, you took off the curbing, you're taking.
It's not Donald, it's not cheap.
You gave him back in Laura at three hundred thousand dollars.
What?
Well, again, yeah, again, remember, we only have, we don't have three, we don't have, I guess, two, two mil, two million four. We're still a million short.
No, no, we took off, we took off Smithville.
What I, what I would suggest is if there's any particular road we wanted to take off, which I think, I think we boiled it down to a few roads to take off. I would send the bid out for all the roads and let's see what numbers.
Okay.
We get back. Then we can say, we wanna do a piece of this road. We're gonna do all of this road. Because it may come in at twenty-five dollars a square yard.
Okay, so how do we, how do we write that up? And that's not you, but how do we write that up as a resolution?
So full class one.
Full, full class one, not to exceed one, one million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, one eighty-four?
You, you put out the resolution, tonight you can put a bid.
Then you can put, that's what I'm saying. I wanna approve it that, yeah. And then we can come back with the roads to be selected by the board.
Or we can just, we can just name, we can name the roads that you wanna do. We just won't know how, how far you wanna go.
So we, then we're gonna be a guy who bitch.
We're naming your C class one and then we'll take it from there.
So it's a full class one.
Correct. Right. Except that we're taking Campbell out.
Now you're taking the, you're taking the curbing and the price comes with the, you might do the whole thing.
Right. You, you take, well, actually, no, Campbell's staying there, but just parts of it.
Okay, that's gonna be next meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, if the board authorizes it for that not to exceed your budget number for all the class one roads, then we'll put out the bid and we'll see, we'll see what comes back.
Right. Now, would we be able to approve those roads? I'm just trying to do it. September's not gonna be too late for us to approve it at our September second meeting.
The bid?
Uh, no, the road, picking the roads. Cause what you're saying now is we put it out to bid, we'll have an answer, then we would pick.
Well, so if, if we put it out to bid today, you probably won't get those bids back until probably this time next month.
Okay.
Then it would be.
At the next meeting, you pick the roads and then.
All right.
And we finalize.
Okay, all right.
Well, we're gonna be able to pave in September, October before the end of the.
That's what we, that's what we're trying to.
Depending on weather.
It's pushing it.
Right, that's why I was trying to get it that we can get to a point where we can have a resolution where we can.
So you have to approve it by the next meeting.
Right, we have to.
So what will happen is if we go out to bid and bids come back and say all the roads, pick them up at two million dollars. What then we would do is go through and say, all right, he wants to charge us a hundred thousand dollars for Donald Court. We're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that. We're only gonna award up to one point three with these following roads.
Right.
That's how it should work.
All right. So we're. So, so tonight, we're authorized and to put out to bid the one point three million on the class one roads. Okay. So I'll make that resolution to put out to bid.
I'll second that.
Class, the class one roads.
Class one roads for the one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, one eighty-four. On it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next is a wall.
Oh, we're not doing it.
No, the wall.
I'll make this quicker. So the wall on Craigmere Road.
Well, excuse me, what's, sir, you came in.
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-five, right?
Yeah, public comment, we did and we, yeah.
He came last time about a foothold issue, what he had with the drainage. He wants to know about paying it as soon as possible.
Who's, who's responsible for paying it?
Yeah, he said, we said we're gonna send it over to engineer.
If you want, I mean.
Yeah, if you wanna just respond, yeah. Cause you went and looked.
I went there, I, I met.
So let him respond, let him respond.
Okay.
Yeah, so I met, I met with the gentleman at the property. There's a catch basin in the middle of his yard. I don't know who put it in. If you want, come on, that'd be easier if you come up. He's saying that the village put it in years ago or that. Whatever. It's in the middle of his yard, causes backups. He's done some work on the property, adjusting the pipes and under drains to that basin. That basin then goes to Fawnhill Drive, to the street. All right? I did some research. I didn't find anything that puts the responsibility of the village on that catch basin. There's no drainage easements that I saw that was filed. I don't know if you had a chance to go through your title report, but there was nothing on file that the village would be responsible for that line that's not within Fawnhill Drive, unfortunately. I'm not denying that it exists or I don't know who put it there.
Right, without, without a definitive answer that you, you did your due diligence to look for it. You were unable to find it. Unless you can find information to the contrary to present to the board, at this point, we would not be able to approve that claim.
Legally, you can't.
Again, yeah, so apparently there's a, there's a drain line that goes farther back into these private properties. Again, there's nothing that I found that either officially makes it a village easement, unfortunately. So there's really.
It was built back in the sixties or seventies.
It could've been. It could've been. But there's no, there's no drainage easement associated with it. There's no, there's no paperwork saying who's owning and maintaining that line. So again, you know, unless you have something.
So what can I do to help myself out? I shouldn't get all this water from everybody's water in my backyard. Cause ultimately, I'm getting everybody's water in my backyard. Whenever heavy rains come, I get, get specific water in my backyard. So I'm at a low point, I understand, but as I say.
Right, I mean, since it's a private property, it's not, we're, we're not, you know, we're not engineers as far as answering what to do with the water. If it's not coming from the villages.
So you let me dig, you let me dig whatever I need to dig and I'll make my own catch basin and so you'll be giving.
Well, I mean, again, if, as long as it doesn't break your code, you can dig what, you know, I, I would check with the building department before you just go digging. And I would also check with any gas company before you go digging. I would check with any, yeah. I, I wouldn't just go, yeah, I, I wouldn't just go digging, but yeah.
Let the engineers plan.
The, the village would let you.
You can, you can propose improvements on your property to, to improve the drainage as necessary.
Right.
What were they on, record of the sixties or seventies?
There's nothing on file that says that that is the village's responsibility or ownership.
Is it possible the town has, has something?
I checked the county.
Shouldn't be an easement if there is a water line.
That's.
Right, that's.
That's typically what it is. If it's to be owned by the municipality or maintained by them, there's usually an easement associated with that to go over private property.
So it isn't directly related to that.
I have not, I did some research. I did not find any.
You go to the county.
So I, I would invite, check your title report also. When you purchase the home, it should list any encumbrances on the property.
On a spectrum, but either on the house, correct, the buyer.
Did you look at your file here? The building department file?
I didn't find it. I tried years ago, but then I just got stuck.
All right, sorry.
Unfortunately, yeah. But you can propose improvements on your property.
Thank you. Hit the wall.
The wall. Three options. One, take the old wall down, push it back, widen the road. You'll end up with about a three to five foot shoulder. That's option one. That's about sixty to sixty-five thousand if you build a wall. Option two, take out the wall and just slope it up, providing that's same shoulder, slope it up steep so that we stay within our allowed property boundaries. I don't particularly care for that option only because it's very steep and it would be very difficult for that property owner to maintain that front yard.
It would, it, it would've come down to dirt?
It would, but it would be steep. So right now, we have a wall. We're gonna push it back. So there, you're, you're gonna get a little higher on the wall. And so we have a thirteen foot wide, let's say, road widening easement. We gotta stay within that thirteen.
You're going up thirteen, you're going up that six feet high.
And so it makes it, it makes it steep. So the third option is.
How much was that, the second option?
The second option is anywhere in the range of twenty, twenty-five thousand. The third option is to make, do no wall, but lessen the slope so that it's basically maintainable. But that would require the homeowner to give the ability for us to go on their property because you have to go back farther to make it less steep.
And how much is that?
Generally the same cost. It was.
The homeowner, did you speak to the?
How many?
Couple thousand dollars more roughly.
Did you speak to the homeowner?
Five more or from the twenty-two thousand?
He said twenty, twenty-five for the, for the steep option. And he said it's probably twenty-five for the, for the.
So I guess the option is to, I would do, go with three.
One second, did you speak to the homeowner?
Yes.
So that's, let's see.
They spoke to, they want a wall. They're used to the wall. Their yard is flat. You know, they're concerned about mowing on a slope, et cetera.
So we give them responsibility for it? They can keep the wall, get responsibility.
You could.
And then we're off to.
You could.
Was there a fourth option or just three?
It's still three.
Well, the option go, we're backing up property that they don't want, so you can't do that.
So options one, well, options one and two technically don't require the homeowner's.
So I'll go with option two then.
I just don't wanna run into.
Be nice and give them option three.
I don't wanna run into a situation where they, they're afraid to mow it because it's too steep.
I hear you, but replacing a wall every three months.
I don't disagree with that.
Doesn't make sense.
So it's either option one, put the wall back at the higher cost or do the grading. And then option three would involve their permission to make it less steep, but you, you know, you're gonna want.
So if they wanna work along, I'll work along, go with option three.
So I think, okay, so I think as board members, we should approach the homeowner.
He did, he did really.
No, no, he did. But now that the board has had a chance to review the three, one is sixty-five thousand to the, to the village, one is twenty-five thousand to the village. The option that would be best, would be in the middle, would be the option where it slopes further back onto their property.
Which is option.
Which they would have to give us permission. So I'm gonna say, would you mind going back and representing the village and see if they would go, you know, just say the village board met. And, yeah, they're inclined to go with the option which would make it less steep for you as a concern, but if not, they'll probably go with the fir, yeah.
Steeper.
Steep, they don't wanna work with us.
Right, if they don't wanna work with us, okay.
Yeah, so that, when I talked to them, I said, you know, obviously I have to talk to the board more and see which direction they would like to go in.
What do you suggest, by the way?
Third option.
But if you have no choice, if they wouldn't give us a third option, then you stop to the two.
Correct. Cause technically, the slope that we're providing them with option two is a standard engineered slope. Like it's, you can do it, it's done. But I get it, they're on a rider, you know, they will.
I don't want somebody to come into my property, but I wanna work with them. I'll give them option three. Even the cost is higher for the first time, but it's, it's not every month.
Option three is the best route. That's the best route.
Are the trees in play at all?
I still have to submit it to the insurance company.
Are the trees in play at all?
I've never.
They come out in all options.
Right, but, but I'm saying, but even so, they wouldn't give me sixty-five, they're not.
No, but I still have to submit whatever it is.
Right. It's not even on their property. The one big tree's not on their property. The other one is, but it's within the easement they've already granted for widening.
So all three options, those trees are gone?
Yes.
Got it. That the homeowner knows that, he just said.
Yeah.
And that's included in the cost?
Okay. That's the biggest cost with the grading is the trees. Take them out.
All right.
So I think we should try for three. If they don't go with three, tell them it's gonna be two. So they should better choose three.
No, no, you're, option, option, option two, grade, yeah. We'll give them the best option to maintain their property. Versus otherwise, we'll be forced to go with option one because we don't want.
Option two.
The, the board, the board does not wanna build, move the wall back and still have problems with the wall. You know, village.
You tell the board, the board is not putting a wall. If they want, if they're nervous about the slope.
I just say, you should just give permission to the village. They'll take care of the rest, but you should work with them and provide.
So we've signed the glass. Did they propose anything when we spoke to them? Did they propose what they, what they're?
Leave it alone. It's been there for, how many years? It's been there.
Yeah, and we're replacing it every year.
Yeah.
So they have a benefit. They get new blocks every year.
Okay, so that's all solved.
One last question.
Well, it'll be solved after John.
Yeah, we changed the. Would there be a curb there at the end of their property or no? How would that be tied to the road?
Yeah.
So you have, so right now, you have edge of pavement and you have, you have basic wall. So if we did the slope, we would actually widen so you have a shoulder.
Oh, it'd be paved.
Correct. Then you'd have, then you'd just have the slope up, there'd be no curb.
All right, great.
Right. Which is perfect because there's not, you're not in a wall.
Correct. And it, and it eliminates that, that little.
What's the time that you can go back to them and we can possibly have a decision and then when, when can we get it remediated?
So I'll go back to them whenever I can be with them, the speaker next. I'm sure they'll probably make a decision and then I can report back.
One other question. With that sloping up and the people falling asleep because people don't know how to drive, because they're hitting walls. Will the cars actually hit the dirt and go over, flip over? I mean, are we, are we creating a different problem or?
So if you.
Are we still gonna have to put yellow, yellow signs?
I would still have the yellow sign there, but if you go with the flatter slope, you would lose it.
Okay. So, yeah, so the answer is to do the flatter slope so we can avoid accidents.
That we know.
And loss alike, so, okay.
And this question's gonna look materially different there. I mean, it really juts out into the road, so.
Yeah, no, it'll, it'll blend right in and it'll just feel like a regular shoulder.
But if you go down in September, October, that would be, I mean, it looks like it needs to be done.
Hopefully I have an answer for you in the next call.
Right, if we can get the answer for the next meeting.
My last question, eighteen Christmas Hill, we have the issue of the water, Laura Lane. What ever happened to that? You weren't on the camera?
Yes, so eighteen Christmas Hill, we camered it. It's turned out that the drainage that was installed by the homeowner was installed backwards. So it was actually bringing water to his property and not away. And so every time it rained, all the water from Laura would go into his property and then come out of his drain because he was so much lower. And once we alerted him to that, he hired somebody to concrete the drain.
Okay. And while we got you here, I might as well ask about, I think it's one ninety-one Route fifty-nine, that we met with the homeowner, the homeowner.
The shopping plaza.
The shopping plaza owner. Right. So we're gonna work on, that's the area that floods out by Route fifty-nine that floods out. So we're gonna try to get greets put in front. Is that what we came up with?
I said, can you take a look at that? That's a solution, but that's a continual maintenance solution.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll start, start there and see what else we can do in budget, which.
So then I'll work up a project scope and then maybe I'll do that the next week's budget.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To resolutions.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Did we just lose trustee?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we have a form.
Yeah, no, I just. Just come to that. Okay. All right, so moving, moving on to resolutions, uh, resolution authorizing acceptance of the proposal. Thank you, John. Resolution authorizing acceptance of proposal of fleet transit solutions LLC to pursue the clean communities grant opportunity. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Donna, if you wanna note that Isaac left this way, yep. Next, we have authorizing the building department to purchase a shelf bookcase from Uline in the amount of five hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents, none per ton. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have establishing the position of Village of Vermont Code Enforcement Officer Two, less than full-time. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Make it so you can work more hours.
Possible.
Right, possible.
If you want anyone, if you want anyone to work more hours, then you're too.
But you have to have it with county personnel, otherwise you don't have the, you can't, okay. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
We need somebody to second that, so.
I second.
Okay. Next, we have authorizing the Village of Vermont Justice Court to apply for a JCP grant in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six grant cycle of up to twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the approval of the Treasury abstracts of August eighth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of.
Oh, that should be four.
August, oh, August fourth. In the amount of one, one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six and twenty-nine cents. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, motion approving minutes of, minutes of July seventh. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I think we're up to the quote from the traffic solutions which Morris and Larry went into. So we're up to the discussions. One last, wait, can I just go out of, I'm just gonna go out. Donna had put into our packet the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the proposal of free fleet transit solutions LLC to pursue the clean communities grant opportunity. And that was a funding application, so.
You did that.
Right.
Did I just do that?
I think you did that.
I don't know, cause you had to.
Yes, it changed.
Okay.
I think you did the right one.
Okay.
You did the right one.
Okay. All right. So in that case, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we did not leave that out. Okay. Then we can go back to the traffic solutions. So I'll turn the meeting over to Larry and Morris.
Larry, you second. Now Donna's needed. Donna, you said you had exhibits attached here? Are they?
There are pictures in the packet of what, behind the poles and what they look like.
Okay, I believe she'd have that in the packet.
Where is it?
It was right before the road.
After the quote, so.
Why does that look like my car, why does that look like my car in the picture?
That's what I had you going on the speed limit. Cause I found someone. Yeah, we're looking for the right guy.
Just saying, it says four run, right? Just, and, and the right color.
All right.
Based on our meeting of the twenty-third of July with the Ramapo Police Department, Morris and I did feel that it was necessary for the village to purchase several radar reader signs and possibly a pole or a mounting device to the poles. Donna got a couple quotes while we were there after the meeting. I think we also discussed possibly looking into a walk, crosswalk sign or a yield sign.
Some signs with lights.
That's okay if we didn't, Donna. In thinking about it afterward.
That's, that's your one at a time.
Yeah, it's, it's less important, but maybe we could just go through the quote here. I think we wanted to purchase at least two if possible to start with. Morris, was that your right option?
Yes, correct. Well, assuming the Ramapo PD was gonna give us two of them, at least for a certain amount of time.
I think they pledged to that, so we have to, we have to follow up with them.
Because our two, you know, is at Morris, see how it goes.
Donna, I'm, I'm happy to call them too or email them. If, I'll stop them one day this week just to get the contact info with them. I'd like to follow up with them and see where we are.
Oh, the Sergeant Lee?
Yes, yes. But back to the signs. I think you had one, one quote and then the second one. I gave you a quote also from another village.
He did? I didn't see that.
There we go. It's a seven-one, seven-four, the latter two.
Is that for two of them?
Yes.
Says two.
Excellent, excellent.
It says two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's for two.
Solar with a pole mount.
Yes.
But it doesn't come with the pole or the installation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there an option that we could buy a pole? Let's open that up to discussion for the board.
How much is the pole? How much a pole?
It doesn't, it doesn't go on the street pole?
A round pole is a hundred dollars.
It doesn't go on the street pole?
Uh, we'd have to go back to O and R from what we were told.
Doesn't go on a utility pole.
But it can go, it can go on sign poles.
A street sign pole? A street sign?
Any, any sign, no?
No. She told me the pole has to be able to hold thirty pounds. No, she, you need to put your, a pole, a separate pole and. A pole ten to twelve feet in height, four inch diameter. I don't know what a breakaway, maybe who knows what that is.
Yeah, breakaway is when it goes into the ground and something else sticks out.
Capable of holding thirty pounds, so.
So the track, if someone goes into it.
Yeah, that's what she.
Four inches in diameter is a big pole.
Yeah.
How many inches?
Four inches diameter is a huge pole.
Yeah, I think if you take a look at the last picture where it says. Yeah, I think if you take a look at the last picture where it's, the wood, I mean, that looks like a four by four.
Yeah.
You can't see, but.
There's no breakaway on wood poles, but it's fine.
Right, but I mean, normally you have to concrete that in, otherwise it's.
Yeah, because it's a simple installation, by the way.
I actually saw one today, and it did have a metal pole, probably the four inch that you referenced, it was near a school in New City, I don't know if it's called something Glen's School, and it, it's, it's there to slow traffic, it, it's very effective, I, you know, it's an open discussion, that is definitely a semi-permanent placement there, if we did that.
Right, do you know what type of base that is that they were using there?
Like you said, it's put in the ground in cement and it's there permanently, you could either have the radar device there permanently or rotate it, if you bought two signs, or four poles.
The thing, you're the one that rotated throughout the village, you're not keeping.
You do or don't. You do or don't.
You do.
I agree.
Was it, maybe there's a, a, like a.
Right, is there a portable, portable type base that somehow is not gonna get broken?
Why can't you just put on the ORN poles?
What?
Why can't you just put on the ORN poles?
They have to have the ORN permission, they have to wait for them six months? Call me.
The village suffered, had one on a pole, I went by it, I stuck it, took pictures, honestly, it, it looked very temporary, it. But Shem, it, it didn't look that sturdy or, I don't know if anybody would be bold enough to try and steal something like that.
Nobody's stealing it, you put on the, you put on the ORN poles and that's it.
Does it have to sit on the top of the pole though?
No, they had a band, in Suffolk, they had a band around the telephone pole.
Yeah, I mean, it looks to be about roof, it looks to be about roof height of.
I would do is I'd call the meeting of Trish for ORN, tell them to be putting on these things on your, on the poles, temporarily, for a weekend, weekend, that's it.
But even that solar panel has to be attached to the pole.
Yeah, but they both go on with, with strapping.
Right, Donna, I think the best thing is you called a Trish down.
She left.
She left, who took her over?
They don't have someone yet, there's like an interim person, so.
The interim person, we haven't charged, now we called them down for a meeting, we're telling them that we're gonna be using the poles to hang up these signs temporarily.
You're gonna ask what the contract says, you're not gonna tell, you're gonna ask.
I'm gonna tell them to put it on.
Well, I'll ask them if we can do that.
Right.
I'll ask them if we can do that.
Everybody does it. Everybody does it, you're not, you just tell them to put it on and that's it.
All right, I'll find out.
If you don't, just write tape and it doesn't make sense, should we also?
Then we'll authorize the poles.
Okay.
Then we'll figure out how to authorize the poles.
Do you want to try and vote to purchase these?
I say we purchase these now, I think they're gonna take six weeks to get.
I agree.
So we get them, and within these few weeks, we'll figure out the best solution.
Purchase two to start with?
Yes.
And then we'll pursue the pole option, if not, we pursue the other pole and put them, maybe get four and rotate these on four poles, two of them.
Those main roads.
You put Adminson, Regina, different places.
Correct, Echo Range, whatever, the big, the blossoms, all the places.
Who, they, that's a good question.
What?
Who's rotating them?
I have.
You want me to come in with the screw gun and start moving these things to hold the pole?
Can we, can we contract it out to our highway department, then we can do that?
It's not, it's not.
Hang it up, yeah.
I guess you have to.
Yeah.
Why not?
Because they could put it up.
There you go.
Then I'll find out about the yellow, I'll ask her.
No, don't you worry.
I'll sell them a truck.
I'll help you lift it.
Traffic safety.
I'll have the farmer put it up for you, big deal, give you five minutes.
The other sign with the lights around the yellow one is a crosswalk truck, I saw them online, traffic safety and sure as you, right?
You do, and then you ask, tell them to hang it up.
Do you want to move, do you want me to move this?
Yeah, let's go.
Let's move the purchase of two Shield fifteen B, speed display, base shield, mounting bracket, and integrated soul, solar pole mount, battery kit, the solar panel fifty watt, includes bracket and pole harness, three-year warranty, the two of them purchased for seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars eighty-two cents from All Traffic Solutions, throughout State College, Pennsylvania, the middle of Pennsylvania, the name sounds familiar, All Traffic Solutions, I think they're a fairly large outfit supplying it across the country, we'll start with two, we'll buy additional hardware as needed if so, so I would move that myself, seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Morris, all, Mayor, you want to take it, you're gonna call about it, you want me to, all in favor, aye, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for traffic safety.
I was gonna.
He was gonna abstain. You wanna abstain, abstain?
No, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
Do you have any safety in speeding?
No, no, I just would, I just.
He just wants to make sure, he knows how it's happening before you vote.
Right, I wanna make sure how we're connecting to the pole and how.
The highway department.
As far as comes to ours, we're gonna have to, I just wanna make sure it's adaptable for another pole, if, yeah, having it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll figure it out for you.
Um, good.
That's a question that I have to ask.
Yes.
I may have to stay on one pole in one location, and that's, I don't know.
And could we purchase a, a separate pole for them that it could be mounted to?
She doesn't sell poles.
Right, B we did.
Google knows.
All right, so, um, okay, all right, next we have the installation of, um, two, Donna, do we want to do two no dumping signs on South Muncie Road?
It's just a request, I, I don't know, that's up to the board, I.
So, so we had a request about paying one or two no dumping, I mean, we could start with one no dumping sign?
Where?
South Muncie Road.
South, oh, yeah, that's funny, okay, no problem.
They're, they're saying that, that they'd like a no dumping sign?
All right, there's no, no reason why not to, yeah, no problem, there's dumping there all the time.
Right.
Oh, that brings up the next question, okay, new business.
All right, so I'm, I'll make the motion to put up one, one no dumping sign. It's throughway property?
It says South Muncie Road before you arrive at Saddle River Road.
Yes.
Oh, oh, all right, got it.
So we're.
Between the swampy area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make.
Make it two, just in case.
Okay, two no dumping signs, I'll make the motion for two.
We can take one if you want, but you have a ton.
Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so now we have old business.
Now new business.
Anybody else, new business?
I, um, Dunley is having a major problem.
Dun?
Dun, and.
Who's Dun?
And.
What is Dun?
They have.
Where is it, where is Dunley?
It's off, off Laura, off Thompson, there's one house that is multi-housing rental where I tried to fire it so far, I couldn't get anywhere, and anyway, I had a meeting and every night, every weekend now, and every few days, they're having now major events, they rent out the stadiums, and, and you can't get through to the block, so I had a meeting with the block, they're requesting for now, the start of the point, what we could do with our department is to have no parking signs on the block, there was, there was an ambulance called twice on the block because there are two, three people who are critically ill, and it took them five, took them about five minutes, the ambulance to get through the block over the weekends, so I told them I'll get them no parking signs on the block, and so I think, I think we should have about twelve signs, I, I don't think we need twelve, but I'm not sure how much we need, then we're gonna go through in the highway department, so I'm the, so therefore I am going to author, and I'm gonna make, and make coordination and to do a resolution that we should hang up no parking signs at Dunley.
Donald Court?
Dun, D U N N.
Yeah.
Dun Road.
Dun Road.
Well, where's that?
It's off Thompson, oh, Laura, Thompson, Dun, so I'll, I'll make the resolution to hang up and put another.
Is that consistent with our laws, no parking all the time, all, does it list, okay.
Is it both sides, you think, or one side?
Both sides, and then we feel we're gonna, and as soon as it calms down, we'll slow it down, slow it eventually.
Okay.
And I'll make the resolution.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many signs are you asking to put?
I'll do twelve, I don't think I need twelve, but I'm gonna, I'll do twelve, I'd rather have, I'd have to come back for more.
What, what are you saying, Lou?
What law is that, Berfington?
What?
What law is that based on that there's no parking?
You can make no parking signs, and, and if there's too much traffic, it can get through congestion.
Don't you have to create a law that says there's no parking on that street?
What?
Don't you have to create a law that says there's no parking?
Is there no, is there no parking on the street currently, and we're just putting up signs to, to advertise the no parking, or is it?
No, there isn't.
Okay, I mean, that, that's something that we can look into and at the next meeting, you know, we can provide a more formal opinion.
You cannot make no one side no parking, and you cannot make no parking, we park all the time, and, and, and no parking signs.
Right, well, that has to be something to back it up with in our code or a law.
What do you mean, for the synagogues and stuff, where you wish, but.
When you do it for the synagogue, you usually pass a resolution saying there's no parking on one side of the road.
Huh?
When you do it for the synagogue, you usually pass a resolution that says there's no parking on one side of the road.
One side you do, or two sides?
But there's no resolution currently or.
So I'm making a resolution.
He just did a resolution.
He made a resolution, just made a resolution.
For the signs.
What?
For no parking or the signs?
No parking.
Oh, all right. He made a resolution to install no parking signs on both sides of the road.
And now you have to make a resolution that there'll be no parking on Dun.
On Dun Road.
On Dun Road, you need two, two resolutions.
Make a resolution to no parking on Dun Road.
Right.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so there's two separate resolutions, one for making it no parking, one for installing the signs.
How many homes are in that row?
What?
How many homes are in that row?
There's about, it's, it's eight to ten, but it is, they rent out stadiums of the.
Stadiums.
They, they have a field, they paved a part of a field and they play.
You know about this traffic?
Yes, multiple violations on it, it's a multifamily house owned by a guy out of Muncie, that rents it out to three Mexican families who hold events in the backyard.
Of direct, there's, there's one house with, it has twelve, ten tenants.
Yeah.
In one house.
There's nothing we can do about?
We've tried to get in it, we can't just go, we, we, everything we hear is hypothetical, we haven't seen how many tenants.
Anybody tried getting into it?
Doug, he keeps going over and bothering them, and they won't let him anywhere near the house.
And I, I, Josh Strauss would give him a, a warrant.
Just, would give him a warrant, he's gotta justify that warrant with something.
That's good, and if he wants a warrant, he should tell me, I'll work for him with Josh Strauss to get it, I told him. Next.
Okay, now, for that matter, new business, the people, um, sat on Regina Court, on Regina Road, or Court, it's Court over there, Regina Road. Right across the street from one Regina, there's cars also parked on both sides, impossible to go there quite today. Yes, and they were requesting from Saddle River to Regina Court on the right side, they were requesting no parking sign.
On Saddle River?
On Regina Road.
Good, Saddle River is not our road.
Yes, correct.
Actually, we had no parking signs there three or four times, somebody keeps pulling them out.
Okay, so I suggest we put them back.
Well, it's like if there is them, we don't even need a vote then.
How can we find out? If, if, if we ever.